Good evening. I'd like to call the July 6, 2021 Planning Commission Meeting to order. Please be advised that this meeting is being hosted through live stream on the city's website. I'd like to remind the Planning Commission to have their microphones turned on and positioned so the audience can hear. Director King, maybe you have a roll call, please?
Sure. Commissioner Dana Hill?
Here.
Commissioner Cindy Lemke is absent with notice. Commissioner Jacob Beunsterfer?
Here.
Vice Chair Lori Van Arsdale? And Chair John Worth.
Here. Thank you. Please stand and join me for a... Okay. Agenda item 4A approval of minutes for the Planning Commission meeting of June 15. Was there any changes, corrections, comments? Okay, nothing. We'll extend the motion for approval.
I'd like to make a recommendation to approve the minutes in the Planning Commission meeting from June 15, 2021.
Second?
I'll second it. I found a typo and I can't find it again. That's okay. I'll approve them as they are with just one letter. I'm sorry. I'll second it.
Seconded by Vice Chair Arsdale. And... That passes 4-0. Oh, I'm... Passes 3-1. Was that intentional?
It was... I have to abstain because I wasn't here.
Okay, gotcha.
I can't get the thing to move over.
So, let the record show that it passed 3-0 with one F, one F station. Okay. Moving to Agenda Item Number 5, Public Comment Period. There's a three-minute time limit per person. All who wish to speak need to be recognized by the chair before speaking. Members of the public shall comply with the adopted rules of decorum. If you are joining by teleconference, please mute your phone to prevent noise interference until you are given time to provide public comment. Also, when speaking, please mute your live stream. State your name and item you're commenting on before speaking. Are there any members of the public participating through teleconference that would like to comment on any of the items not on the agenda?
I do have an e-comment to read.
Okay, thank you.
Came from Adam Eventov. His comment reads as follows. While battery technology is a very important part of our energy future, it is only part of the story. Our energy future will require far more than just batteries. It will require green hydrogen that can be used directly into engines as well as hydrogen used in fuel cells. This provides long-range options for logistics and transportation and holds the potential to decentralize the power grid. End of comment.
That for Agenda Item 7B for just public comment. On the paper you gave us, it said Item 7B.
He did include Item 7B, however, Item 7B is not a public hearing.
Thank you. Okay, well, Item 6A, Site Development Review 21-001 and Model Home Complex 21-001, the Oak Ridge at McSweeney Farms. Good evening. Oh, I apologize.
Yes, my apologies. There is a request to speak from Judith McPherson.
Please, please come up. State your name and address for the record as well. Thank you.
Yes, my name is Judith McPherson, and I'm here to speak on an item that is coming up this Thursday at Mr. King would know, a community development review meeting. And it is regarding granting of City of Hemet public property for affixing a permanent structure to said property. And these, and I believe that before we get to that level, that I would suggest that the City of Hemet explore drafting municipal code that addresses when a private citizen has a need to affix a permanent structure to City of Hemet property before that is done, that it should at least rise to the level of this commission as well as approval by the city council. To be more specific, one is the installation of a trash enclosure on Front Street. There already is one there, and I believe that this may have been a result because I, over two months ago, initiated a conversation with Lynn Merrill, the interim public works director, about the fact that there were, I believe, four bins within the City of Hemet Park, public parking lot that was placed there by the adjacent property owner. And those bins had, up until a few months ago, been kept within his private parcel, as all property owners in the City of Hemet probably are required to do with our own trash receptacles. What it did was it created a public nuisance. Homeless were digging through the trash. They were not secure. There was probably food disposal from nearby restaurants, which could create a rodent problem. I know that that is supposed to be locked and secure. And so I think one of the remedies for the problem was to allow that property owner to build a trash enclosure. I think a simpler remedy is have your bins within your private property. The other location is to place a similar block enclosure behind the City of Hemet Historic Theater. And that is because a building that's going on to the rear of 118, 124, 126 North Harvard, from what I see in the permitting process. Well, first of all, excavation and building occurred months before there was ever a building permit or approval. Part of the curbing of the City of Hemet parking fell in where excavation had gone up underneath before there was any, I want to say right away, encroachment permit to do so. And the plans indicate that that is for a patio cover. Well, from observation, it appears that the structure...
Can I ask you to...
Why would you excavate down five or six feet if you were just building a patio cover?
This is McPherson. I asked you to hurry it up for three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry, and I'll go fast. I'll be like old algebra class. Okay. And it appears that it is a multi-level structure for occupancy for a retail establishment. And basically, that is it. I think that we need to have some kind of code because I know that there's another instance of this on South Harvard where there was never any permit, permits were denied, but the property owner built a patio onto the City of Hemet public sidewalk.
Thank you very much. Okay, Item 6A, Site Development Review 21-001 and Model Home Complex 21-001 for the Oak Ridge at McSweeney Farms.
Good evening, Chair. Members of the Planning Commission and the community. I'm Monique Alanis Slater, project planner on behalf of Solidad Carrazosa, Site Development Review 21-001 and Model Home Complex 21-001. The applicant is D.R. Horton. Applicant Susan Paradiso. Property owner of these lots are D.R. Horton, and the property location is McSweeney Farms' specific plan located at South Village Loop and Montage. The project before you is design review of 58 single-family residential lots within tract 33824 and associated model home complex. Item was heard by the Planning Commission on June 15, 2021. This item was continued to this evening to allow D.R. Horton to meet with the homeowners to discuss concerns with regard to proposed two-story homes on the south perimeter of the tract. Since then, the applicant, D.R. Horton, has met with the neighborhood. They met on June 24 to discuss the concerns. And as a result, the applicant has agreed to construct single-story homes along the southern perimeter of the development as a result of the meeting on June 24. In addition, due to the configuration and plotting of the development, to be able to fit the single-story homes on the lot, some adjustments had to be made that require the Planning Commission's approval. This McSweeney Farms specific plan does allow a 10% adjustment on the setbacks within the front and front side setbacks. And as a result of reconfiguration to the lots, Lot 6, 8, 10, 12, and 14 would be adjusted at the rear to 19 feet. And Lots 7, 9, 11, and 13 have been replotted as well with an 18-foot front yard setback. As in review of the adjustment, staff is in support of it. It does provide additional street profile, staggered street profile and articulation, which is part of the proposal this evening. At the prior Planning Commission meeting and in correspondence since the Planning Commission, the concerns expressed were in regards to privacy, views, dust control, the need for retaining walls, construction hours, timely noticing, as well as the criteria in the McSweeney Farms specific plan. The privacy and views would, as part of the proposal by D.R. Horton, would be alleviated with the construction of the single-story homes along the southern perimeter. Dust control measures, we will be reaching out to the construction company involved with any of the grading, and there would be also part of construction dust control measures as part of the permit for the project. I did want to mention as part of the development, in your plotting plan that was provided to you, wanted to clarify on behalf of the applicant with regards to the notations on Lots 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, and through 15. The applicant originally concepted a two-foot retaining wall as part of the development. As a result of further review, it was determined that the retaining walls would not be required. Retaining walls are continuing to be proposed at the perimeter of, or at the rear lot line of Lots 1, 2, and a portion of Lot 3. And this was the plan that was included in the exhibit and in your Planning Commission President, Planning Commission Staff Report. And so just to clarify, Lots 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and 14, and 15 on the exhibit, the retaining wall notation would be removed for this project. At the prior Planning Commission meeting, there was also discussion with regards to timely noticing that was addressed at that meeting. However, if there are any additional questions, we can certainly go back and respond to those questions again. Since then, we've received three letters from Attorney Stephen Saylor on behalf of Ms. Galindo, who resides at 848 Olivet. Staff responded to the initial, the initial letter dated June 11, 2021. The second and the third letters were responses were incorporated into the staff report. The attorney was also notified that additional responses were incorporated in the staff report, and a copy of the staff report was forwarded to that attorney. Should the Planning Commission wish to approve this evening, staff believes that the project does comply with the required setbacks, building heights, walls, landscaping, and development standards for the McSweeney Farms specific plan. In addition to the requested adjustment, the project is in compliance with the single-family design guidelines and with the city's general plan for low-medium density residential 5.1 to 8 dwelling units per acre. The city council adopted a environmental impact report in 2003 for this specific plan and was, a notice of determination was filed in accordance with the secret requirements. No legal challenges have been brought against the project or environmental determination. If the Planning Commission wishes to consider approval, staff would recommend that the Planning Commission approve a minor adjustment to the front setbacks for Lots 7, 9, 11, and 13, and rear setback adjustment for Lots 6, 8, 10, 12, and 14. And that the Planning Commission adopt resolution for the Site Development Review and Model Home Complex, subject to the conditions of approval outlined in Exhibits 1A through 1G, or excuse me, Exhibit 1A, and as illustrated in the Site Development Review Plan, Exhibit 1B through 1G. That's my presentation on behalf. Answer any questions.
Thank you very much. Any questions? Staff?
Just, I understand that you had not one, but actually two meetings with the community, and I just wanted to say thank you for that effort very much.
All right, so there is no other comments from the public on the, this recommendation?
Since the preparation of the staff report, there are no additional comments to report.
Just to clarify, they are going to remove retaining walls on Lots 7 through 15. That's being corrected on the map, and then all single-story. And then the Palafax Street, that's going to be closed off until the construction is open, well, until people start moving in. Or are they, I know that was one of the concerns with the street access to those existing tracks.
We can certainly incorporate it as a condition of approval, if not already included in the conditions. The applicant, D.R. Horton, is here this evening also to further clarify.
Talking about Palafax Street?
Yeah, the connection.
But the retaining walls was, they were removed on Lot 8 through...
Thank you very much. Go ahead and open up public hearing. Applicant, come up and state your name and address for the record, please.
Hello, my name is Rick Leonhart, and I live over at 848 Olivet Street. And I, just a quick comment, if I may, I'd just like to thank D.R. Horton for working with the homeowners. They were very kind, met up with us once in person, once over a Zoom call, and we are very, very grateful for their time and also grateful to the Planning Commission for hearing our concerns. So, thank you all.
Thank you. All right, go ahead and state your name and...
Okay, we'll try that again. My name is John Myrie with D.R. Horton. Address is 2280 Wardlow Circle, Suite 100 in Corona, California. So I'd just like to say that we're very pleased with the solution and the outcome. The neighborhood is supportive, I think, through our two meetings, staff is supportive. So we're just very happy that we're able to work this out. Took some creative, little bit of creative work, but we're happy with it. We're satisfied. I would like to comment too on Palafax, that street, when we talked about that with the neighborhood. So, we won't bring any of our construction traffic through that, and we can keep it closed as long as possible, but it is required for secondary access. So it's a building fire code, so it needs to be open for emergencies, but we really don't intend, we won't use it for construction, so when it needs to be open for emergency purposes. We're here to answer any questions, and we just really hope you approve and support the...
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
I just want to thank you again for working with the community and every, trying to make everybody happy.
No, we appreciate it. I think everyone came together and everyone, it worked out very well.
Yes, I completely agree. My, you know, the intent of the originals, specific plan, and there was, that was approved with input from the community out there, it's nice that you're continuing the intent of that with, as that develops out. So thank you very much.
It worked out very well. Thank you.
Any other comments?
I have a request to speak from Randy Terry.
Please state your, your name and address for the record, please.
Hi, my name is Randy Terry and my wife Carla. We both live at 3444 Nightshade Street, which is the back of Lots 2 and 3 of the D.R. Horton. And we would like to express our greatness to D.R. Horton of working with the homeowners up Nightshade and Olivet to come to a happy resolution of this problem, and that we fully support any adoption that the Planning Commission could make to have this pass and approved. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much. Thanks.
All right, we're going to keep this recording for D.R. Horton to play. That's good, okay. Really appreciate it.
Thank you very much. I appreciate you coming to the meeting and supporting, so thank you. Right, any other public...
Hello, my, one more. My name is Timothy Ward, and we live at 752 Olivet. And it's just an echoed sentiment, you know, D.R. Horton really stepped up and made an effort to come. It wasn't just one person in the meeting. They brought, they brought three people and everyone there was willing to listen, and we would appreciate the Commission stamping their approval on this as well, and we appreciate all the efforts from the Commission to help us.
Great, thank you so much.
This is Paula Biaza on the telephone conference as well. I just echo the sentiment.
Can I, I'm sorry, I'm sorry, can I get your...
...of the Planning Commission that...
I'm sorry, can I get your address for the record, please?
Yes, 890 Olivet Street. My apologies for that. I live behind, Marco, my husband and I, live behind Lot 8 and 9. I just like, would like to echo the sentiments that my neighbors expressed. We are appreciative of the Planning Commission listening to our concerns and of D.R. Horton taking the time to meet with us in person and a further televised or meet, team meeting, where they address our concerns, and we are supportive of the approval of the revised plans that show single-story lots behind our homes. Thank you.
Great, thank you so much. Any other public comments online or on the call? All right, here now we'll go ahead and close public hearing. Thoughts, discussions?
And I would like to happily move to approve a minor adjustment to the front yard setbacks of Lots 7, 9, 11, and 13, yard setbacks of Lots 6, 8, 10, 12, and 14, and adopt Planning Commission Resolution for Site Development Review, SDR 21-001, and Model Home Marketing Complex, MHC 21-001, as illustrated in the development plan shown in Attachment Number 1, Exhibits 1B through 1G, and subject to the conditions of approval.
Second. The motion carries 4-0, so thank you guys very, very much. Much appreciated. All right, moving to Item 7A for the Conformance of the City of Hemet's Capital Improvement and for fiscal years 2021 to 22, 2022 to 23 with the City of Hemet General Plan. Item 7A is not public hearing. It is for discussion only.
The 7A item will be presented by Steve Larissa. He's on the Zoom call, I believe.
Thank you. Steve, are you on the call there?
Hi there, everybody. Can, can everybody hear me okay?
Yes, we can now.
Great. Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Commission. Sorry I couldn't be there in person tonight. I had some medical issues I needed to take care of, but I'm here to be able to present to you the determination of the conformance of the CIP with the City of Hemet's General Plan. So I'm going to share my screen here, and hopefully you'll be able to see that, okay? Hopefully you can see the presentation I have there. Okay, so I just, okay, great. So just as a reminder, that this is the presentation of the 2021 to 2022 through the 2022, 2023 CIP or Capital Improvement Program. And it's the, the position or requirement of the Planning Commission is to determine the conformance with the general plan of the CIP document. This CIP document represents a two-year document with the goal of moving towards ultimately a five-year document. The purpose of this is also to identify major projects, to update existing infrastructure, expand capacity, and to enhance the community. You may recall earlier this year, we presented a one-year CIP, and it was then ultimately adopted by council. For this particular CIP document, that is a two-year, it was recently presented to the Infrastructure Commission, and it was, the recommendation was provided to move it on to City Council for adoption. What the CIP means or is what is being sent, what is, what is it in the general plan? So, the CIP as part of the general plan... So the C I P as part of the general plan, it's to continue to implement and update the C I P to address phasing, construction and maintenance of improvements to roadways and intersections. Fund right-of-way acquisition to improve local circulation and congestion issues. Acquire and expand funds from available transportation financing and other programs to assist in financing new roadways and pedestrian and bicycle trails. Monitor the performance of critical intersections and roadways identified in the City of Hemet Circulation Master Plan. And ensure that critical intersections approaching level of service E and roadways approaching level of service D are prioritized for improvement within the city C I P. So that one sentence you have on your screen there is broken down into a little bit more detail and that's what our goal of preparing the C I P is to take in consideration all that information that I just read through with you to make sure that this is addressed and done for the community. These are just some recently completed projects we did over the last fiscal year. With the pavement projects alone, we completed about five million dollars worth of improvements. So those top four projects. That was about five million dollars worth of work. And as you can see, it was kind, three of the projects were held over from years prior. Just in, we had to get all those together to try to put them out on, on the street. Two projects that are coming up right now, the Kirby and Arbor Waterline, that's a critical item that occurred as a rupture last year and damaged some of the Riverside County Flood Control Channel that travels under Kirby and Arbor. So we're, we're going through and upgrading both of those systems that cross that channel to, to bring it back in, and make it safe. And then the citywide sewer main replacement, that's something that's going to be going on for a couple of years. It's something that we have to do every year, just as the sewer lines age. And we are working with Public Works to make sure we address the, the most priority ones first. Here are some new projects that are coming up for this, for this, this fiscal year and next. The idea with the pavement rehabilitation for twenty-one, twenty-two is to put down about three point seven, five million dollars worth of, of pavement, whether it's slurry seal or pavement rehab. And then, and then over, you'll see at the very, the third, fourth bullet down talks about the citywide sewer main replacement relining and coating. That's about three million dollars a year. That's going to be continuing on for quite some time. So I'm, I'm here for any questions or comments you may have. The next step that we go through is we will then take the resolution that we're requesting for the Planning Commission to adopt. We will then take it, move it forward to the City Council at a public hearing and request that they adopt it. I also wanted to bring up as well that typically the idea be, within the engineering department is we want to have a five-year C I P. That's our ultimate goal. And with this now being a two-year C I P, next year's goal is to have a four-year C I P. And then after that will be a five-year. We, we like to take baby steps to make sure everybody is aware of what we're trying to do. As I mentioned in months previous, we hadn't really had a C I P since the two thousand seventeen, two thousand eighteen version of it with one amendment. And our goal is that we're going to make sure that this comes back to go through the Infrastructure Commission as well as Planning Commission and then City Council and is adopted the way it needs to be done. So that way the entire community can see the projects that we're getting, get moving. So with that, then I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you, Steve. Any questions for staff?
I, I have a question, Steve. This is Lori Van Arsdale. The, so we're looking at doing a five-year C I P. And I, I guess I just have a question that sometimes things come up in between. And, and they, like you said, there was a, a water main or a burst pipe or something that caused damage and, you know, we need to fix it. I, I didn't see on here any kind of priority and like in case you have something that has to come in and take the place of something. There's usually not spare money to, to add something. So is, are there going to be any kind of low on the totem pole kind of projects that if that, you know, if you have an emergency or you have something else that seems to be really necessary that, that you would pull that?
That's a good question.
Plan on going and getting more money. I like that.
Well, I can tell you one thing, working with the Infrastructure Commission. There is a sense of trying to find more money to try to do more things for the city and, and I'm all for that. But to, to answer the question specifically, we, we don't kind of hold money back. We do try to balance and put all of the projects out there. And we try to utilize all of our available funds, especially when it comes down to, you, you look at the Measure A funding. The SB one funding, those are both for street type projects. You've got the sewer fund, you've got the water fund. If, if you don't show the good faith to start putting those projects out and utilizing the funding that you're given, there could be some repercussions, especially when it comes to Measure A and, or SB one. There was a backlog of, of projects, about nine million dollars worth of projects from Measure A alone when, when I came in about two and a half years ago. And through pushing those projects out, we're back to where we should be, where we get about two million dollars a year. We spend about two million dollars a year. Now granted, we're still trying to catch up because we, we have some past projects. But there are things that come up over time, in particular, this water line one. Now, within the Water Enterprise Fund, there are available funds that can be used for emergencies. One thing, so, so that addresses the Public Works type site, but in some cases, we've been approached by Riverside County Transportation Department to partner on a few different projects where the City of Hemet borders against the city, the county Riverside. And in order to have a more well-rounded cohesive project, we then present it back to City Council, which we've done a couple of times now through this year alone, and ask for their direction on how they'd like to proceed because we don't have the money for that. What we end up doing is if it's a street type project, we'll take Measure A money where, which is that's the most flexible for streets. And we may postpone a citywide street project in order to address this joint project. So, but that's why we end up going back to council because we want their, their direction. You know, we could do all these projects if we had an unlimited source of funds, but you know, we try our best to try to set up the projects that are coming forward.
Okay. And then the other question, I'm, I was looking for the projects that were done with the development impact fees. And what, one, two, three, three or four? Is there a surplus in that fund or are we just getting back to approving projects like we did tonight so we can build that up again?
Sorry, are you questioning whether or not we're moving? Go ahead.
Development Impact Fee Fund, is there, is, is it? It, or is there some surplus there? I just, because there hasn't been hardly any building going on.
Oh, gotcha. Okay. Yes. No. Yeah. I, I understand you now. So, so yeah, so the, the development impact fees, the funds, that's one thing that is a little different than, say, the Measure A or SB one. The, the fees come in continually over time as projects get developed. And we try to anticipate the amount of projects that are coming up for this coming fiscal year. And that's why we identify the projects that we do in there. Now, it's, it's not to say that, that is all of the projects that we plan on doing. But we do try to be kind of conservative by utilizing what funds we do have available within the diff as opposed to overstretching ourselves to.
Thank you.
Yes.
Yes. Steve, this is Commissioner Hill. So as far as the street reconstruction and the slurry, is there a percent completion on that? And then looking over the five years, is it going to continue? Does it always continue? Can you give me a sense of the project itself?
Sure. I, I know it sounds odd, but I, I'm saying these really are great questions because people, the general public don't, doesn't really understand our goal, our, our purpose of being here. There is no end in sight and that's how, that's how engineers, you guys still like engineers over time. And, and the honest truth is your roads, every road is designed to have a, a life of no more than twenty years with the current forms of asphalt that we use. Now, we know that some of the streets within town are much older than twenty years and maybe they haven't been touched. The ultimate goal for us would be to have the city on a cycle where you get the roads, we collectively get the roads into a situation that they are healthy, that, that's where it comes up with the pavement condition index. Where we get somewhere around seventy for a PCI out of a hundred. And I won't go and bore you with all that stuff, but our goal is to try to get it around there. Right now, the PCI is somewhere in the forties, I believe. So it's going to take a lot of work to bring that up. But let's just say we were at seventy. If we were at seventy, the funds that we got every year from Measure A and/or SB one, we would ultimately try to put those down into a slurry seal situation because the slurry will add five to 10 years of life onto those roads. And that way, that twenty-year-old road, if we catch it in, in good enough time, we can prolong that and have a good condition road for a lot longer period of time. Slurry seal obviously is the best way to, to maintain a road. It's the cheapest, it's the most effective. We don't want to go out there and have to reconstruct roads all the time because that's the most expensive way of doing it. You may have noticed just recently, just south of Florida, I think there's Mayberry and another street over there, we just did some grinding. And if anybody had a chance to drive through there right after the grinding, but before the, the asphalt was placed, you'll see that when they grind down, it's only maybe a quarter of an inch. I'm sorry, I, I, one and a quarter inches. And you'll see right below there that there's another layer of asphalt down there that's cracked up. And I bet you if you go a little further, you could probably say three or four layers in there. So what we're trying to do is minimize that type of work. We want to go back and just be able to put slurry seal over a period of time. And you can get forty years out of the, out of your road if you were able to maintain it that well. So yes, I'd like it to be an end game, but that really isn't what happens with our roads. As you know, that we just continue to get more and more abuse on the roads and, and we always have to maintain them. So.
I kind of figured that was going to be the answer. Uh, I do have another question and that is, you know, some roads, like the road I live on, Anderson Drive, it's like you guys did the slurry on it, but you stopped halfway. You didn't go all the way. Is there a reason for that?
I will have to look exactly why that was. When you say halfway, are you saying down the center of the street, we only did half the street or we went to a certain distance and stopped?
Went to a certain distance and stopped.
Okay. So in that situation, what we run into a lot is the, the roadway is not eligible for a slurry seal the remainder of the way. What we try to do though, is we try to combine some slurry, well, what we'll try to do is do a slurry seal project and, and do some underlying deep dig out repairs that we have. And that way we can get a good surface. But when we get to a point where the next section, the road is just in such bad shape that we know we're going to have to do maybe an edge grind of the existing asphalt and replace it with some additional asphalt. That's where there, it doesn't make any sense to just put the, the black slurry down. So I have to look up exactly where it was on Anderson. Would you mind sharing a cross street with me?
Would be Anderson and Park Drive. Park Hill. Anderson's off Park. Near Stanford.
Got it. Okay. I will look into that of what the situation was there and I will circle back with Mr. King so he can relay that to the commission.
All right. Thank you.
Welcome.
I have a question about the slurry seal as well. Could I know they re-slurried my street and it looks nice. I mean, it's nice redone, but my street wasn't in bad shape in the first place. It was, but they re-slurried it. So I'm not going to complain, but my, my question is, is I know it costs money. And who does, who makes the determination of which streets need to be slurried? Because there are, I'm, I see other streets besides mine that are in poorer condition that should have them over mine.
Okay. So we draw short straws and that's who gets it. Just kidding, just kidding. But you, you bring up a very good point. Why did your street that looked like it wasn't in bad shape get slurry sealed? That's the type of streets that we want slurry sealed. Because if your street isn't in bad shape, that slurry seal is going to make it that much longer. If, if the next street over was in worse shape and it got a slurry seal, well, that slurry putting on that street that doesn't, is not in good shape in the first place is not going to help at all. So the, the purpose that you, or the statement that you made, your street, it was probably the best candidate for having a slurry seal. Now to answer the question about what streets get picked and it's not from a short straw. We actually are updating the pavement condition index or the pavement management program. And that's a, a program that's usually computer-based, GIS-based, however you want to look at it. Where we go and we analyze all the streets within the city and that should be done every five years. The last one was done back in two thousand sixteen, I think. And what that does, it identifies by various raiders. People driving through the, through the community or we hire a, a van to go and mechanically rate the streets. That information is then put into the system and we can determine. If we have say two million dollars a year to do streets, what is the most effective way, what are the most effective streets to be done? And it'll spit back that stuff out to us. Now granted, we have to look at it a little closer because sometimes it'll say the street only needs a slurry seal and, you know, you need to go down six inches to really, to do anything to it. So that's where the human part comes in. But the whole purpose is to get our streets somewhere in the seventy range of a PCI. And that means that the, the streets are in pretty decent shape. We can do slurries, more slurry than having to do full reconstruction or grind and overlay. And that really helps the city's budget.
One more, one more question on your bike lane. I know that's, it shows it on the, the C I P, but at going down Palm Street, I believe, is that budget also through the funding, does that include the slurry streets, the slurries over Palm Street where the bike lanes are going or is it just, they're only going to put a wider sidewalk kind of thing? I don't understand the bike lane.
Yeah, the, the Hemet Valley Bike Way project, yeah, that, that's, that's just for the bike way. There are portions where we're adding asphalt to provide for a dedicated bike lane. In some locations, we would do just the sharrows where you might see, for instance, if you drive in Florida, you'll see a lot of sharrows out there. But the purpose of that bike way is to have dedicated bike paths. It's not separated where you would have a median separating the, the bike, but it's more of a, I think it's called a class three bike lane. So. But no, it won't, it won't redo the rest of the street. It'll just do the portion of the bike way because that's what the grant is for.
Anything else? So Steve, I have a kind of dumb, dumb question. Is the C I P, does a C I P feed into the budgeting process or does the budgeting process establish the cap of the C I P?
Okay. So the chicken or the egg? Okay. Let me, let me figure out the best way to, to get that, get my head around that one. So we know from the engineering side, when we're putting this together, the C I P document, we know what our budgets are for Measure A, SB one, working with Public Works. We know what the, the, the sewer and the water funds available, available funding are. Fire, PD. We know what the available funds are that we are going to be having. And so that's when we kind of combine the development of the projects with the available funding. Now, in the upcoming years, you are likely to see more projects on there that maybe say are unfunded or partially funded. And that really is to get a, a wish list of things. I mean, it, it could be something as big as, and, and this is not, this is only me saying this is. I mean, it, it could be something as big as, and, and this is not, this is only me saying this is, nobody else has said this, but. Let's just say that there was a desire to have a new fire station somewhere. And that fire station is going to cost $10 million. Well. Where does that money come from? Well, we'd have to figure out sources and the fire department would help figure that out. But we could put that on there as a, uh, a project in the future, say five years in the future, that would have to, uh, find funding for it. So this is all a combination. We work in conjunction with the budget process. To get this thing adopted along with the budget in the next fiscal year. What we're going to be doing is this will likely be adopted right before the budget, the annual budget comes around. Because all that information will be, uh, pulled in there. And as you recall, you know, we came to planning commission just a couple of months ago for this last CIP. And now we're coming for the fiscal year 21, 22, which we are already in. So that's why we're still a little bit behind, but. The idea is to have the CIP budget done just prior to adoption of, um, the budget because they're all kind of tied into there.
Thank you. Yeah. I, I think it's a good, I, I'm, I'm glad you mentioned that as far as getting projects, um, listed, even if they are, uh, either partially or, or completely unfunded. Important to get them on the radar, um, get them, uh, more visible so that as opportunities may arise, whether it be a partnership with. Development or, uh, or, uh, grant funding or whatever the case may be. That it, it, they're more visi-, they're more visible. And then with that. Like, um. My chair Ben Arshal was mentioning i- is, you know, if, if things come up and, and you need to, to make decisions on which ones you drop and which ones you keep. Is there a, is there a prioritization ranking or criteria? Um, that, that, that you just do internally or is that something that, um, is, is developed, you know. Based on whatever the situation may be that comes and they say that we have a additional, say $2 million or. Half a million dollar project, we need to find half a million dollar to cut. Let's go through a staff and decide which ones go off. How does that process work? In making that decision?
Okay. So let, let's stick with roads though, because roads are what I know the best. And if we have to, we can go into a little bit of water and sewer as well, roads. So if you notice on the, the, the CIP document that we presented for you. You'll see that there's the 21, 22 pavement rehabilitation program. There is the 21, 22 slurry seal, slurry seal rehabilitation program and then the next fiscal year as well. There's a dollar amount associated with that and. That dollar amount is just for what that project is. Let's just say we want to spend $2 million, um, this next year on pavement rehabilitation. Well, we don't specifically tell. Anybody within the CIP document what those streets are and there's a reason for that. Because throughout the year, uh, leading up to that, we may get calls from residents saying, hey, this street's written really bad shape. That's why we then, we hear the, the, the calls from the residents. We look back at our pavement management program. And see that, okay, well, maybe that it, it could have been looked at a little closer and maybe it makes sense to do that street now. So we would have to do some adjustment, adjustments. The purpose of not specifically stating what streets are going to be done in any one of those projects. Is for the benefit of staff as well as then ultimately council to determine, all right. I, uh, Riverside County came with this project. This is a great project. It's going to, it's going to be good for this area. Let's do that. What's, what's the downside? All right. Well, we'll have less money in the pavement rehabilitation project for this coming fiscal year. That's fine. We still have the ability to move some of that stuff around. Because if we had $2 million for pavement rehab and 600,000 for slurry seal. And we needed a million dollars for this Riverside County project. We would go to council and ask if they want to participate and they say yay. We're down to a million dollars for pavement rehab and 600 for, um, slurry seal. That's a perfect way of, we can now do say a $1.6 million pavement rehabilitation slash slurry seal project. We aren't making the determination staff-wise of what projects end up being done. What we do staff-wise is look to our pavement management program as well as the input that we receive from residents. Uh, from the community members of what projects would benefit.
Well, I, I can see that, I can see, uh, the benefit of having kind of the, the pavement management program as its own. Project, if you will, and having some flexibility for staff and, and council to prioritize how that money is spent. But I, I kind of see that as a single CIP project with a lot of multiple sub projects underneath it. Um, I, I guess I'm, it's more kind of a, a, at a little higher level in terms of prioritization, you know, a, a street line or a, a water line improvement versus. Do we pull, pull money from the pavement management program or do we pull money from, you know, water or, or sewer type of projects? Or, you know, a park benefit or the, you know, the skate park or things of that nature. So it's just, it's more of a question on how, how we, how we. Go through a, a, as a city and prioritize these projects. So we have kind of transparency to the community on, on, on. Not just how it meets the, the, the general plan requirements, but how we as a city, as, 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 as a city are. Investing available funds to improve the community. I think it's important that, 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 that we're transparent on, on, on that process on, you know, that, that, yeah, there is some flexibility that we want to have. Based on input from, from residents, but, um, from a year-to-year basis, if things get pulled off. Let's make sure we are explaining why they're getting pulled off, uh, and, you know, where that money went to instead of that, that project. So. I, I guess it's a more just, um, e- educational for, for myself to better understand how, how we go about. Um, you know, first off, what sets the, what sets the, like you said, the chicken or, or the egg? So we have a certain budget that, that we, we work with and then we have a certain list of projects that we want to accomplish. Uh, and then, and then within, you know, we're not going to finish necessarily all, all of those projects, um, but how, how do we? How, how are we going to make, just how, how do we maintain transparency that, that, that those decisions are being made? Or, or what the basis of those decisions that are, um, are being made on?
So like, like you said earlier, how do we prioritize those projects that come up? And make sure that we're addressing those projects. Because if, if there's some water line that needs to be done. And we just kept putting it off and putting it off and doing all the other projects and all of a sudden it busts and now we have other problems. Well, why did we do that? That, is that sort of what you're, you're getting at? Um, how are we prioritizing those projects?
Correct. Yes, correct. And, and so, so that it gives, um, council. You know, the, kind of the, the, the backup to, to support staff when they come in and say, hey, we, we want to take this, you know, move money from here to here.
You can't, you can't pull money out of water to do streets or.
Correct.
You can't. Some funds you can't take and do other, other things.
Correct. But, uh, you, that, that's a very good point. Um. But within those different settings, so, so we'll, we'll talk about, there's the roads. Pot of money, there's the sewer pot of money and there's the water part of, pot of money. And then you can also get into parks and everything else like that. The roads part of, pot of money where we're, we're getting Measure A, um, SB one. Those projects or those pot of money can only be used in street projects. And the way we say that we are prioritizing the proper streets, we do the pavement management program. That pavement management program has to be updated every five years in order for RCTC to give us our continual allowance of funds. Now let's move over to the water and the sewer. So the water, there is a, a, a listing or atlas sheets of all of the water lines within the city. And the public works crews, the water crews and the sewer crews. They are continually going out there and, and checking the systems to see where there might be some leaks. Uh, whenever we have a, a pavement project, it's going to require some additional work. We ask for the, the public works department as well as other utilities to provide leak checks. To say, hey, you might want to go and check it. We're going to be doing some work out here. Um, and we don't want anybody to cut through this asphalt, uh, in the next three years. So they'll run some checks. Gas company is notorious for that. They'll run some checks to make sure there's no leaks. The system, the atlas system that the public works department maintains. Shows where these pipes are and the age of these pipes, the size of these pipes. There is an identified certain lifespan for those pipes. There is a, a project that we had to start working on towards the eastern part of town and. I still cannot remember the name of the pipe. I want to say it's Orange Bloom or something like that. It's the most bizarre name I've ever heard of. I mean, a lot of people haven't heard of asbestos pipe. Which it was and is still a good, um, conduit for pipe as long as you don't break it. This pipe went in the ground about 80 years ago and I've never heard of it. And so that pipe, because it wasn't touched, it was fine. But all of a sudden, things happen over time over the ground on that. Now we're going to have to go back and identify what we're going to try to do to fix that. So the, the public works staff. They know a certain lifespan for the different types of pipes. And they try to prioritize those pipes that are having, um, more issues. Whether there's, there's additional leaks or the, the valves are getting stuck or there's more development on this, this line. That's how they're prioritizing the system. Really it, it's. Like I mentioned with the sewer, it's a maintenance thing that we come in and as these issues are happening, we're going to reline it or replace it. We normally don't put new sewer lines in unless there is some sort of major failure. The, the VCP, the vitrified, vitrified clay pipe can be in the ground for. Forty, sixty, eighty years and not have a problem unless you have root intrusion. And that brings up a whole other, another issue. Um, but the, the biggest. Area where you can set priorities are the road projects. Because one, those are the most visible. Otherwise, um, if you look at the sewer and water projects. You know, people are just happy they can flush the toilet and take the shower. We are in a maintenance mode on that side. Now let's look at the parks. So right now, uh, Public Works is working on a design for Gibble Park, for a skate park there. And that project is not fully funded. However, the idea was that we go for funds. For a skate park because that was a priority from council some time ago. I believe it was from council. And that was a priority to have a skate park. We were able to get funds for design. That's in the design. We're, uh, the public works director is working towards some sort of grant opportunities to fund the construction of it. So that's another item like I mentioned earlier, we don't have the funding fully identified yet. But we're trying to get those stuff taken care of, get the plans done. And so in case there is a shelf-ready. Pot of funds that come about, here we are. We've got the, the project designed. As far as park up, uh, upgrades, um, I couldn't speak to that. That's more of a public works side of the house. I know that we have our maintenance crews that take care of those areas. A lot of the, the parks and the landscape maintenance are covered through our community facilities districts. Or, and/or our lighting and maintenance, lighting and landscape maintenance districts. So those things are funded by the residents or by the property owners in the area and we maintain it on their behalf. And so any upgrades, there really isn't a lot of funding for that. It's just more of a maintenance thing. I, I hope that's answered a little bit more of your, your request.
Yeah, well, yeah, absolutely. Thank you. Um, especially, you know, the, uh, understanding that there's, uh, coordination between public works and engineering as it relates to. Grouping CIP projects where, where it makes sense to save money when you're doing a street road. Uh, or, or, or a, a pavement project, that's a good time to get in, like you say, and. Fix what's under the ground, uh, so you don't mess up the project that you're doing on top of the ground. So. Yeah, I know that, 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 that was very thorough. Thank you, Steve.
My pleasure.
Anything else? Well, I'll entertain, uh, recommendation?
Yeah. I'll make a resume, recommendation to the planning commission resolution finding. The capital improvement program for fiscal years 21 through 22 and 22, 23. To be consistent with the city of Emmett's general plan.
And that passes for zero. Thanks again, Steve. Item seven B, uh, is not a public hearing item as well, discussion only. Um, it's, uh, new and emerging trends and zoning opportunities.
Good evening Chair, members of the planning commission. I'm Monique Allen Eastflater, our principal planner. This evening, uh, we'd like to present to you, uh, new and emerging trends and zoning opportunities. Uh, the purpose of this work study is to evaluate emerging markets. As a new source for, uh, development, city development activity. The emerging, uh, market trends, uh, that we'll be focusing on will be, uh, electric vehicle, battery storage technology. Fin tech companies, biotech companies, as well as research and development technology. Um, in, uh, September of 2018, uh, the city council, um, adopted the Western Riverside Council of Governments, uh, WR COG. Climate Action Plan. And the plan consists of energy efficiency programs that will, uh, reduce utility costs and greenhouse gas emissions. The recommended measures, um, include the use of residential renewable energy. And neighborhood electric vehicle programs. And with the emergence of, uh, the electric vehicle, uh, the demand has, is increasing exponentially. It is estimated by, uh, 2025 that there will be 30 million electric vehicles on the road. Um, also, um, due to the increase, um, of electrified, um, uh, products. Battery dominated, um, products in these new market opportunities. Such as battery technologies, um, for drones, uh, buses and trucks. Industrial microgrid projects and hybrid battery mobility. Fin tech companies, um, as a result of COVID-19 pandemic. Uh, a significant increase in the dependency of, uh, our banking and financial payment options. Uh, digital loans, e-commerce payment platforms, mobile banking and digital technology. Is more relevant than ever. This would include cloud-based, cloud-based infrastructure, hardware, uh, servers. Cloud-based and, uh, programs such as PayPal, uh, Square, Venmo and Zelle are the technologies that we are seeing. Also there's just discussions of moving forward. We're, we're going to see more of a trend, um, in the next five years. For an increased spending on technology, uh, for firms to keep up with their competition. And focusing on clients' digital experience. Biotech companies, um, as, uh, the bi- biotechnology market is projected to grow. A 9.4% between 2021 to 2027. This is technology consisting of molecular biology, genomics, uh, meta, metabolomics. Biotechnology, uh, which use utilizes organisms' biological systems. And can be, uh, related to market sectors such as medicine and pharmaceuticals, genomics and product of food and chemical. Research and development, uh, with the continued advancement in technology, uh, progressing into the future. And also, uh, the COVID nine pandemic, COVID-19 pandemic accelerated digitization and automation. Allowing companies to remain resilient. And adversity also referred to as the digital revolution. The latest technology trends that we're seeing include artificial intelligence, robotics, quantum computing. Uh, cybersecurity, distributed and distributed cloud. With these emerging markets. With these emerging markets on the horizon, staff sees an opportunity to support this technology through zoning. With available land, vacant land in the city and existing underutilized buildings and as well as remote access to the city, the emerging markets companies may find the city to be desirable due to our remote access or remote location as well as affordability. There are opportunities to provide streamlined permitting and attract these types of businesses through the development process. And by taking a look at our, our zoning in place and our land use to see the, the potential to bring these technologies to the city. This concludes my presentation. This is open for discussion and we would be happy to answer questions.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, Monique. You said thirty million electrical vehicles by twenty twenty-five. Is that nationwide, California?
That, that's great. Yes, this would be a nationwide estimation.
Are we thinking of bringing in a research center? Research park kind of atmosphere to draw in companies that do this kind of, do this kind of work, high technology? Is that the goal here?
Hi, yes, Commissioner Hill. So what we're trying to do is we know that these emerging markets are coming down the line. And we want to be in the forefront city to provide those opportunities to be established here in Hemet versus elsewhere, and then we're trying to catch up. So what we're trying to do is establish these types of uses within our zoning code that permits and allows them to establish into existing building structures that are no longer used by banking systems in traditional sense. So we have a lot of buildings that are just left vacant, being deteriorated. So we wanted to utilize some of those vacant buildings, which are designed to keep items out. So undesirables out. So those buildings would fit perfectly for research and development. Any type of tech companies that are trying to hide their secrets up until they're ready to be, to deliver to the general population. So this would give those opportunities within the city. And we have a lot of vacant buildings that are not going to be utilized in a traditional sense anymore as we go forward.
Would there be a designated plot of land that would be designated as a research parkway with several buildings for high technology?
Not in that direct sense. What we're trying to do is put it within our commercial zones or the commercial manufacturing zone or industrial zones of that sort. To limit it to one area, it may even restrict even further than rather than allowing those businesses to establish within different avenues within our city that has those opportunities, that has those vacant buildings, that has those infrastructures already in place. So rather than create new items, they're going to utilize some of these due to the fact that they're going to be less expensive to establish in those businesses or those building structures.
Okay. As far as cybersecurity goes, I understand how this works. I work for Northrop Grumman, which is a defense contractor. We have very heavy cybersecurity. And I don't know if you've seen these reports about cities being held hostage because of a breach in vulnerabilities in the system. Have we taken a look at that? Have we had an independent assessment on cybersecurity? I mean, if we're going to tout that this is the place to come for cybersecurity, I would hope that we take care of our own four walls.
Sure. This is more of a question for IT department, but I'll try to answer as much as I can. My understanding is that our IT department is doing their best to make sure that all of our data is secured and safe. We're asked to do certain things throughout our normal process so that we don't expose ourselves to possible infiltration from these virus hacking malwares and so on. So they're up, up to speed on all of the latest and greatest technology as well as the dos and don'ts that we need to look after as we depend quite a bit on our normal work on our computer systems and internet access.
Do we, do we know how often they do their security scans?
I do not know that, but they do it pretty frequently to make sure that we don't have any viruses or malware within our system. I do understand that we're supposed to maintain our computers on every evening so that they can update whatever the system that it needs to on a nightly basis.
Okay, good.
So if we had a cybersecurity R and D firm here, maybe we could get some good first releases.
I would say let's do it now. I don't know if you've seen those reports on companies being in, in cities being held hostage. It's, it's pretty significant.
I, I would just like to also say that the city's cybersecurity protocols are generally confidential. It's, it's something that they keep under wraps pretty tightly. They are evaluated by our JPIA because they do offer cybersecurity advice. So it's something that's hit a lot of communities. I'm sure you've seen articles about cities getting locked out.
Yes. Okay, good. Thank you.
Other questions?
Well, this might not be the appropriate spot for this, but it talked about the energy and the climate and all those kinds of things that we deal with almost every day when it comes to the news. And what we're doing to implement things to, you know, help that. I regretted when I left our council many years ago. I, I regretted not being more forceful about implementing requirements for whole house fans. We are the perfect climate. But they are, it's a big fan that's usually installed in your hallway that you, our climate is perfect because we cool off at night. Cool air in, you open your windows and your doors and for about ten, twenty minutes, pulls all the cool air in, takes the hot air out of the attic and reduces air conditioning bill or your electric bill by fifty to ninety percent. That's, that's even better than what older does, really. And it's at two hundred and fifty dollars for the part or for the equipment and, and then an installation for the most part. You can get fancier ones, but for the most part, you can install this for seven hundred dollars to a thousand dollars. And I, I know we're talking about what can we do to, you know, address many of these issues, but I see all these incentives coming down from WRCOG and all these others and they all focus on solar and those are thousands and thousands of dollars worth of investment. And this is a simple. Actually, when you're building a house, it's even less, you know, you just, it, it's real simple. But incentivize our public to put what? Those are rarely included in the Edison, you know, incentive. I know this might not be the exact spot to do it, but I saw, I saw a quick opportunity with the wording in here. And I would really like to see us explore that. So figuring out if everybody could have an extra six hundred to a thousand dollars to spend a year, what that would do for just our economy, you know? Brilliant truly, it's a very inexpensive way. I watched my mother who installed it way, way back and it was quite a savings for her house. And I, I, I'm not very good because I haven't put it in mine, but I intend to, so. And I've, I've been looking, I've been looking into it and that's why I got excited about it again. I've been looking into it because I've got, you know, some places I'd like as, you know, just get it in. And I'm not home a lot, so I'm not the greatest example. But families that have these four, five, six hundred dollar electric bills, if they could save two or three hundred dollars, that'd mean a lot. So there's my piece. Thank you.
You know, one other thing here is, you know, changing the zoning and attracting some of this research and development and higher tech companies, I think would bring in higher income type individuals, bring more money into the community, into the city. I think it's a great idea.
So if, so we're, we're looking at making some adjustments, right, to our, our requirements or our, you know, the, the playing field to make it easier for these companies to come in. Are we at the same time like doing outreach to them? And, you know, maybe, maybe like almost like a one-page brochure, like this is why you need to come to Hemet. Here's what we're doing. And that could be something also if we put it in, within, within the context of what specific things we've been doing to, to make the, the environment more conducive. Are those two processes happening simultaneously?
Generally, those opportunities are at like international shopping centers, convention or conferences where you would go up to actual vendors and request them to look at City of Hemet as part of their, part of their model city or model location. Due to COVID nineteen and different financial difficulties, the city has not been, and among other cities have not been very involved in ICSC at this point. But as we go forward, as we advertise into our Facebook and our electronic formats on our computer system, on our websites and so on, the word will get out that the city is doing something different now. This is one of the things that Arizona has been doing, that they've been testing autonomous vehicles on their streets. And other states has not started that yet. But because they allow that, more of the companies are relocating into Arizona for that type of technology. So what we're trying to say is get in and apply these incentives or these requirements or these options for those folks ahead of the general company or general cities that would start. So that way we're one of the ones that are first on in line to attract those businesses to our city.
So, you know, and we get that information out on Facebook. But we, I'm sure we could put together some sort of pamphlet or, you know, this little brochure. Here's a vacation house, you know.
Brochures are obsolete.
Product brochure, if you will.
There you go.
Point, point being is something that outlines, you know, the specific reasons why it's, it's good. And, and to give that to different people, Planning Commission, Council, that, you know, if there's ever an opportunity you're out and about and talking to somebody, hey, yeah, here's a link to a brochure.
Right. So this is an option or this is a step to set those in motion. Correct.
That's great.
So this isn't necessarily about greenhouse effect or trying to go green. This is just more of emerging workshop of just trying to come up with ideas of bringing revenue into the city.
Correct. Absolutely.
So I mean, if we're looking at, I know tho- those are definitely more cost effective. But it's more green too. It's more green too, which is always good. And I know we have that Tesla art home manufacturer coming eventually, which is kind of one of many ideas of going green and using solar and powering entire facility and stuff like that. Have we looked into possible like venue kind of areas where we can bring in like an arena in a way of bringing in customers from outside in so that they can eat here, they can stay here, they can want to, not necessarily want to come here, but eventually want to come here more and more. But if we create like a venue where we have concerts and things like that. I know Ramona Bowl, we try to do that, but it can only hold so many people.
Five thousand four hundred and forty-three.
But I, I don't know, it's just another suggestion is like a, like a venue concept to bring people from outside in where they can eat at our restaurants and go shopping in our stores. And I know these will generate people to live here, a lot of these facilities. So we'll have more long-term residents, but just a suggestion.
You know, and on that point is, is, you know, you're so, it's, these, this effort is to address, you know, making it easier for these companies because of the emerging trends to, to relocate here. But at the same time, don't want to forget about, you know, qual- quality of life for those people. We want to be here as well and be residents and, and doing business and paying taxes. And, you know, when I look at that list, it's, I'm, I may be stereotyping some, but suffice to say that most likely people in those industries are, they're, they're, they're into green, they're into healthy lifestyles, they're into mountain biking and parks and trails and hiking and things like that, which is very consistent with the city's, you know, healthy lifestyle goals. So it'd be, that could be kind of a nexus between some of these other types of projects or, or, or programs that we list on the CIP as kind of, yeah, they're out there, but it's tied to what we're also trying to do in terms of bringing emerging, you know, trends or, or, or the result of emerging trends into our community. It just might be good to see what, it's not just the per- the permitting process and, and, and repurposing the building, it's, it's the whole package, it's.
Chair, I was gonna say, I was involved in, you remember the whole Amazon HQ two nonsense? And that was actually something that was very big during that process. County in Ontario. It wasn't just, you know, do you have the facilities that we need? It was, do our workers want to live there? You know, do you have things for us to do, entertainment venues, recreation? So I think that's.
Councilmember Krupa chairs the Diamond Valley Lake. Went on for about four years now, maybe pushing five. And first it was a overall study, what have, we got done, what needed to be done, what they were going to do now, what is, now what they're going to do. So the implementation committee is focused on trying to get some of those things implemented. And I think, I think that we don't talk about that enough, either here at this level or at the council level, about what we can do to all include that trails that go from here to Lake Skinner and back, bike trails, hiking trails. Think about what we have going around the lake. Valleywide recreation and the, and the big softball, softball tournaments. The, all the things that are out there already are things that we capitalize on.
That's, that's kind of the, it lends itself to what, what the discussion, well, my question for Steve was in terms of how we prioritize this project. So we get them on the radar because they're important, but how do we prioritize them? Is it, you know, things like this may be hard to qualify, you know, especially if these things are not funded, but at least have it on there and have it tied to what other initiatives and things that we're doing to try to improve our, our, our community. But let's just not forget about all the other stuff, all the quality of life stuff, healthy lifestyle stuff. So.
I know the cannabis business, I know that's still in the works and that, that's a new trend and that's a big revenue maker for the cities as well. And something else to look into, like I say, San Antonio's doing. I don't know exactly what all is involved with City San Antonio, but it's the hemp farm that's out there. I don't know what revenue that that makes for the city, but it's getting bigger and bigger and bigger out there every time I drive out there. But that's another new trend that's coming, that's growing and that we're working on currently, which is good because it's going to be good revenue for the, for the city. But I agree with Commissioner Van Arsdale about the lake too, because I know we've had plans for decades of activities at the lake. You know, whether there's going to be a nice water park, there's going to be a hotel, there's going to be all kinds of stuff out there and then that all just kind of fell through. And I know that's a huge opportunity the city could take advantage of if there is a loophole bringing business out there to the lake.
Got done, just in this discussion, what's that? Oh yeah, my microphone is on. So for example, all these years, they've said, they had. all these years, they've said they had planned, said you could have, this is an idea that they put out to us and we embraced totally way back then, the hotel up at the lake. So in the meantime, and, and other recreation things to do up, up at the lake. In the meantime, there's the kangaroo rat and there was a crossing the road and they said, you can't do that or all those kinds of things because the kangaroo rat needs a bridge across the road. And that was, I don't know how many millions of dollars. It was ridiculous. One of the things that I was elated about, and I was so excited, I didn't know why that, you know, newspapers didn't write about this because years ago they wrote about the kangaroo rat problem. Metropolitan finally got the, the Fish and Wildlife and, and the, all the environmental groups to buy off on the fact that they could do a tunnel underneath, like a little pipe tunnel or whatever, however big it was. And it was two hundred and fifty thousand dollars and it could go under the road and they got the funding and they got it done. So with this planning, we can now include all those things like what you just talked about up at the lake. That, that we all just, the, the bridge was constantly in our way, the kangaroo rat bridge. Now they can go under the tunnel, that problem is solved and we should all be very excited about that. Thank you, Councilmember Krupa for keeping that committee going.
There's a lot of, a lot of things that were on the list to go out there, but.
But that was one big one.
I think one of the things that's, that, that we can learn from what happened there is that, you know, that you, it, it's, it goes back to what, what, what this whole presentation is about is they said, well, if you have a golf course, you're going to need, need a hotel. And if you have this, then you're going to need that. So they were all kind of dependent, all these different elements were all dependent upon each other, but there was nothing really bringing them in per se. And so having you know, a, a, a multi stakeholders at the table and, you know, making conditions like this, you know, cha- changing our zoning, doing things to, to help facilitate those businesses coming in at the same time that we're working with met with all the resources that are there. But, um, yeah, there's a lot of opportunity out on that thousand acres of.
Exactly is holding it up per se. I mean, I know there's, there's all kinds of regulations and stuff, but what, what in the end made all that just come to a screeching halt over the kangaroo rats, but everything kangaroo.
But it was a matter of, there was a point, I know, when I left the council, there was a point where we had actually hired someone help us remind them of the promises that were made to the community. Brand and to, and to work towards getting things that were still reasonable and, and right for us to, to get. That's what that Diamond Valley Committee was formed to do also. Promised what is still realistic for. Now what can we, that's why it's called the implementation committee. Now what can be done? And, and what will pencil? And, and it wasn't ever a, it wasn't ever projects that would just be done by Matt. It were projects that they could create a, a landscape for so that, that these entities and entrepreneurs and, and all the businesses that could come in and make them make sense and have a recreation Mecca. Oh, but sure. Hopefully we're on, on our way in a number of ways to, and we, we have stayed focused on the east side. There was a bunch planned for the west side too. But the east side has more infrastructure and more things started and you can, you can really that grow easier than starting all over at the west side.
I mean, didn't, also this kind of had to do with money and, you know, there was a certain budget that Matt had for that whole area and.
Fifty million dollar budget for both sides that wouldn't put in the, the roads. Had to, you know, you had to work on what, what, what could be done to capitalize on that to happen and to bring partners in. Now the kangaroo rats have an underground route.
Passage.
They passage, yes.
All right. Any other thoughts, questions, discussion? All right, great. We'll hear a motion for the recommendation.
Make the recommendation that the planning commission receives a report on emerging market uses and provide input and direction on potential zoning codes amended to promote emerging market uses.
I'll second that.
That's just four zero. Thank you for that. All right, item eight A, city attorney reports.
Yeah. So, you know, as I've told the commission before, oftentimes I'll take this opportunity just to give you an update on changes in land use law that I think are either going to be important to you in an upcoming hearing, or perhaps have been things that you've been dealing with recently. The first one was, the governor has extended executive order N twenty-nine dash twenty. So that was the executive order that allowed public agencies to continue to have teleconference and web conference public meetings that didn't have to comply with the strict requirements of the Brown Act. So for the newer members of the commission, it used to be that if you wanted to have a teleconference, if one of you wanted to appear remotely by Zoom or by telephone, like the chair did last meeting, we had to post an agenda at that location. The, it had to be publicly accessible. They had to be able to make public comment at that location, which I, I believe you'd said you, you were to private residence. That would a little bit, a little awkward. I know that people in the past have, you know, been in conference rooms at hotels and the hotel is like, you, you're going to post this silly notice outside of our conference room for twenty-four hours. And it's like, yes, that's what the Brown Act requires. So I think that, you know, it's been, it's been extended indefinitely. After a lot of hard work from the league of California cities and the county equivalent. And the truth is, I'm not entirely sure I expect it to come back. Or as rightly noted, we're moving to a hybrid work, we're moving to a hybrid meeting model, COVID, I mean, federal court, you can now appear by Zoom. I don't think I would have thought that was coming three years ago, two years ago. So I think we're, we're headed in that direction and I think we're going to see a lot of changes to these transparency laws. Recently, Brown Act, they've required that agendas be posted on an agency's website. They've also on, under the Brown Act, passed requirements or prohibitions on liking each other's social media posts. Prevent communication that way. So I think the legislature is going to have to be, is going to have to grapple with this massive societal change. And eventually they'll get to us and public agencies and our meetings. They stay tuned, but I wanted to let you guys know that. There was another interesting development in a county of El Dorado case. They had something called Measure E. It was adopted by the voters. And it was an attempt to get rid of paper roads, which I know this community has grappled with, this commission has grappled with recently. The council's grappled with, and this was an issue where developers would come in, do their project, they would pay their development fee. That was at least in theory earmarked to, you know, transportation infrastructure, the building or widening of a road. But because only a certain number of projects had gotten done, they never, the city or the county never had enough money to actually do the improvement. And so the, the voters passed an initiative that required that the actual infrastructure be built before the project could proceed. And the Court of Appeal in that case decided that that was unlawful exaction because it didn't have, we'll talk about this sometimes, if you guys ever start trying to impose your own conditions of approval, you have to have a rough proportionality between the condition of approval you're putting on the project and the negative effect of that project that you're trying to cure. In this case, you know, a project should be required to correct the increased traffic created by the project itself. Couldn't be required to build a road that will serve every project down the street in the future. And that's what the voter initiative required. And so the, the Court of Appeal struck it. The last case that I thought was pretty interesting was the first challenge to SB thirty-five. So you had your joint meeting with the city council regarding housing elements. I'm not sure how familiar everybody is with SB thirty-five, but essentially it's a relatively new law passed in twenty seventeen. They required this streamlining for certain multifamily residential projects. And it required the allowance of those projects, sometimes even when it was contrary to local zoning. So City of Berkeley, of all places, brought a challenge to SB thirty-five on the basis that it violated home rule and local control because it was violating their historic preservation ordinance. So people were tearing down historic structures to build multifamily and they were doing it under SB thirty-five. So the Court of Appeal in that case did not side with the cities and local. Found that SB thirty-five was constitutional despite the fact that it overrode local zoning. Structures, which I thought was an interesting, I thought of all the types of ordinances that might survive historic structures, historic, uh, structure, uh, short preservation ordinances, I should say, would have the strongest. And, and the Court of Appeal said no. And so that, that's kind of the legal environment we as a local agency operate in. The state of California, the legislature is passing law after law after law on housing. Accessory dwelling units, permit streamlining for residential, all with the intent of getting especially the coastal communities of the state to build more housing and to build housing that the average person in the state is capable of affording in their lifetime. Whether they're successful in that endeavor or not, I think what remains. But communities like Hemet do end up in the crosshairs. You know, I've, I've been here for this year. I, I wouldn't say that this community or by development. Questions like, you know, can you put the single family houses on the south side? But, you know, these laws are slowly eroding local control and cases like that, like I just mentioned, demonstrate that. So the three developments that I've seen in the last month that I thought might be of interest. Questions, let me know. If you guys want to talk about it afterwards.
With our technology, our AV audio. Director King.
I don't have an item for June twenty-second, but for chairman. On the twenty-ninth of June, we had a combination meeting with city council and planning commission. We discussed about housing elements, safety element and environmental justice element. So it was a good lively discussion. I think we got a lot of information and we had a lot of questions. There was a lot of good engagement between the the consultant and the city as well as the planning commission and council. So any further questions you guys have, please let me know and I'll try to get those answers to you. And the consultants are going to be here until we get that item adopted for the October. So just let me know if you have any questions. And I'll get the answers to you as quickly as possible.
HB, that presentation the consultant presented, is that available?
I believe that is available on YouTube, the entire presentation.
YouTube?
Uh, but I could ask our IT department to make sure that we get the link for you.
Appreciate it. Thank you.
No problem.
And future agenda items.
In the future, you will see Stetson Corner Development coming before you and objective design standards. What this is also includes the VMTs, which is vehicles miles traveled under the SP two grant. So we'll have that presentation, I believe, at the next meeting for planning commission and the following meeting with city council. We can have another combo meeting. So we had to break it apart, but you'll have the opportunity to get that presentation, get some feedback and so on.
And planning commissioner reports.
Commissioner Hill.
I have none.
Commissioner Lumpy is absent with notice. Commissioner Beep Surfer.
The only thing to report is I'm, those that are listening and watching is I asked for thoughts and prayers for our mayor Myers with the recent news of her health. And just continue to keep praying for her. She's a fighter and she'll get through this.
West Chairman Van Arsdale.
That and also our, our other council member Linda. Not catchy, but I hope they, they all know that there's a lot of, there's a lot of things that are new in that field and I'm grateful because I have, also have neighbors and my own mother has, has to deal with it. So we're all founded by it and hold everybody up in thoughts and prayers.
Chairman Worth.
Nothing to report.
Thank you.
All right. Well, if there's nothing further, then we will be adjourned until July twentieth.
Thank you.